Good evening. I'd like to call to order the special meeting and work session of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you present or watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the pledge of the flag. I'd like to ask Ms. Board Member Rebecca Ammon if you would do the honors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Thank you. You may be seated. We have a shorter agenda than normal for this special meeting. We're now going to move on to section two, which is reports and information. And in reports and information, we have item two point oh one, which is our proposed FY twenty-three operating budget presentation. Dr. Parker, please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now I will present from the dials, from the podium here.
So may I have a birthday? This should be the third time, I believe.
Mr. Brown, distinguished members of school board.
Thank you this evening for allowing me to present the FY superintendent's proposed FY twenty twenty-three operating budget. And this presentation will capture a lot of the information that we have discussed in work sessions and various meetings, but for public consumption, I want to make sure that we provide some detail that will allow our staff and our families to have a greater knowledge of the budget and the impact the budget will have moving forward for Newport News Public Schools. So tonight, I propose a budget that totals three hundred and fifty-nine point four million dollars, which represents a twenty-two point six million dollar increase or six point seven percent increase over the current FY twenty-two operating budget. This budget that I presented this evening will be based on the governor's proposed budget, which was presented in December of two thousand and twenty-one. And as we know and will share on the slide here, there are two versions of the House, the House and Senate budgets that are currently under consideration with the General Assembly, which may impact the numbers that are presented this evening for this budget. But for the sake of staying on time with our budget development, we use the governor's proposed budget until we have a firm budget from the state. And then we make the amendment amendments necessary once we have the state figures that will allow us to finalize the budget process. So looking at the budget calendar here, just what has taken place up to this point, we usually begin the budget process in November. And between November and December, we solicit input from various departments, management of our school division, and also community input as well on the needs of the school division. Once that information is gathered and we have the governor's proposed budget, we take a look at the development process and usually engage the school board and city council in this process as we firm down, firm out the estimate of needs based on those budget priorities. So in January, we had a budget planning work session, and in February, we had a public input session, which we did virtually this year and had over fifty-plus participants participate in that public input session. We have left a link online for input on the budget from community members and staff. And we also have engaged the city with a joint session, which was conducted earlier this month to present this information. And I have recently met with the city manager. So tonight, I am presenting the superintendent's estimate of need for the board to consider. And we hope that on March twenty-second, at the March board meeting, the board will consider this budget and approve it. As always, in our planning process, we align our budget priorities with the school division's strategic plan, Journey Twenty Twenty-five. We have five areas of that plan: student success, student and staff wellness, employee expertise, enhanced partnerships, and stewardship of resources. The other lens we will be looking at tonight as we present this proposed budget will be from the lens of school safety, looking at healthcare, which is a guiding driver in our budget development, the need to continue with our technology initiatives that allow us to manage a one-to-one device initiative in our school division. And also, we always focus on the quality of our learning spaces, which is where we spend some of our capital dollars for continuing to improve the quality of classrooms and other spaces in our schools. As I mentioned earlier, the second column here is the governor's proposed budget, which was released in December of two thousand and twenty-one. If we calculate the changes in the bottom column, the bottom row of this chart here is the impact of each one of those proposed budgets on our, on Newport News Public Schools. So the budget, the proposed budget that we're basing this presentation tonight on would have a nineteen point eight million dollar impact based on the governor's proposed budget in December of two thousand and twenty-one. The House's version of the budget, which has been released, the impact of that budget would be a revenue increase of sixteen million dollars. And the Senate proposed budget would have a positive impact of twenty-seven million dollars. We know that crossover, when the House and Senate sends their budget across, took place recently. Neither budget was approved, and they're in negotiation at this point. And we are hoping that we will have a firm budget from the House, from the state, in date in the next few days. Just a quick look at these columns here and what each budget entail and how this will impact Newport News and our, and our operating budget for FY twenty-three. All three budgets have a raise included, which is a good thing. The governor's proposed budget has a five percent raise for each of the two, of the biennium, for each year of the biennium, FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four. The House version of the budget has a four percent raise with a one percent bonus each year of the biennium, FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four. So that would be four percent in FY twenty-three with a one percent bonus, and then four percent in FY twenty-four with a one percent bonus. The Senate version of the budget sticks with the five percent range for each year of the biennium of FY twenty-three and twenty-four and a one-time bonus of one thousand dollars, and that's in June of FY twenty-three. And I think, Mr. Brown, that clears up where we were talking about. That would be next year in FY twenty-three. Okay? They also, if you look at the Pres- Virginia preschool initiative, the governor had, the governor's budget proposed an increase in per people rate for preschool from seven thousand six sixty-five, six fifty-five to eight thousand three fifty-nine, and then the House stuck with that recommendation and the Senate. So hopefully, we'll see an increase in dollars related to preschool. The VRS rate is, was recommended to maintain the same. Now, usually in years where we see an increase in VRS, we also, that is a significant budget impact. But since they were leaving that rate the same at sixteen point six-two percent, that's a good thing. We will not see that impact on budget any further at this particular point over this biennium. Early reading initiatives, the governor's budget increased, proposed to increase funding to include fourth and fifth grades, which would allow for additional staff and resources to support reading initiatives at the fourth and fifth grade levels. Last year, the House, the budget, the state budget did support earlier grades, first, second, and third grade reading initiatives. So we're glad to see that continue to be recommended. The House budget is sticking with that. The Senate budget provides a fund for reading specialists for every five hundred and fifty students in grades K through three with flexibility to work with grades four through five, four through six students. So they use a, they're using a calculation based on per-student ratio to determine how many reading specialists would be provided. What we were waiting to see was whether there was a whole harmless for ADM. We'll talk about enrollment during this presentation. And we have had an enrollment decrease over the past two years during the pandemic. The governor's budget recommends holding harmless schools for this, for next year for the, for the ADM decreases due to the pandemic. So funding is provided to, for the elimination of sales tax. Now, there's two things in this, in this piece here. There's a hold harmless for the grocery tax, because as you know, Governor Youngkin eliminated the grocery tax. Some of those tax, that tax, those, that tax revenue went towards schools. So they're holding us harmless in this proposed budget by making sure that schools do not lose revenue because of that decision. And also looking at benchmarking due to COVID-nineteen, which affects ADM, the loss of students. The House and the Senate are supporting that recommendation, so we feel confident that that will come through. And then the last item is there is the at-risk add-on. The governor's budget increased the rate from twenty-six to forty-nine point five percent in FY twenty-three and then leveled it out at thirty-six percent in FY twenty-four. So we should see additional revenue coming for at, for at-risk students. The at-risk add-ons supports our most vulnerable students. We should see additional revenue coming out of, all three of those budgets are supporting that. So when we look at this table here, and this, this table started off pretty, pretty empty at the beginning. We know that we are anticipating, but based on the governor's project, on the governor's budget, an increase of nineteen point eight million dollars, and that's the figure that we're using to present this budget to you this evening. That is, is a moving target. That budget, that number may change as the state finalizes their budget. But for tonight's purposes, we have balanced the budget using that additional revenue. Additional, additionally, meeting with the city manager, I have a firm commitment from the city manager to include in her proposed budget, city budget, a two-point-eight million dollar increase for Newport News Public Schools in operating revenue. So with that, two of those items, we should see, we're anticipating a twenty-two point six million dollar increase in revenue based on the information we have this evening. So I wanted to put some state trend in there for context, because it's always good to give our public context about where, where, what we're seeing in terms of that. So over the, over the past years, we have seen that, we had seen some significant reductions due to a recession back in two thousand and nine, which lowered the amount of state revenue, and we really struggled through those times. But as we've seen over the past years, the state has continued to increase revenue to schools, and the state revenue makes up almost sixty, sixty-plus percent of our budget. So as we continue to see state revenue increase, it impacts our bottom line in a positive way. We also this year have seen that our local composite index change, which was, which lowered to two point two eight zero eight from point two eight four two. And the lower our composite index goes, the more state revenue we actually receive. So, and the local composite index, if, for those who may not know, is basically a measure that the state uses that calculates a locality's wealth. So they have reduced our local composite index by a few percentage, by a few points from point two eight four two to point two eight zero eight, which, and we see that we have a very fairly large state, state increase this year as part of that, the factor of the LCI going down. At the state side, from the locality side, and the locality makes up about thirty to thirty-five percent of our operating revenue. This is just a view of the actual dollars in the budget. It doesn't count debt service. But with that two-point-eight million dollar projected, proposed increase, we can see that we would see an increase from one, one hundred thirteen point four million dollars in operating revenue to one hundred sixteen point two million dollars in operating revenue. So let's get into enrollment, just enrollment trends. We have to maintain, pay attention to enrollment, because a student, basically, a number of students determine how, how our state revenue plays out. Now, over the past two years, before the pandemic, in FY twenty, we were, we were usually, our average ADM was around twenty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-nine. First year of the pandemic, we saw significant loss to students. The state did not hold us, held us harmless for that loss of students due, over the pandemic in FY twenty-one and consequently, and FY twenty-two. So we are pleased to see that it is proposed to continue to hold harmless for ADM, and hopefully, we'll see the enrollment increases go back to the trend line as we, as we move out of the pandemic. But for the sake of building this budget, we used a number of twenty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-two students that would allow us to have a more accurate budget. Should we see additional students come, the state normally will give you more money. If more students come than your proposed number that you're using to build your budget, the state will increase your revenue in the fourth, roughly around the fourth quarter of the year to compensate for that increase in ADM. Okay? So it's not, it's not something that you would be penalized for by using a lower number. The state usually typically calculates your ADM by the March thirtieth, by March thirtieth of each year. And depending on where you are, they'll, they'll adjust your revenue accordingly. This year, we're being held harmless for ADM due to the pandemic. So just special populations, I'll quickly go through here just to see that our special needs population has not changed much. We did see a decrease over the, of some students due to the pandemic, from one, down from fourteen hundred roughly to a thousand and forty-seven. And then we've remained fairly consistent from that point. Again, we like to see, we hope to see that number move more back to the trend line as we move out of the pandemic. And I'm sorry, this is, this is pre-case and VPI and pre-case sped. So this is not a total special needs population. This is VPI, which are our younger students and our pre-case sped students. English language learners, pandemic or not, they continue to come. So we continue to see a higher number of, of English language learners. This year, we're projecting an addition of eighty-nine students. And as we look at our budget development, you'll see that we're continuing to add resources towards our ELL population to accommodate for the growth in population. So that number is continuing to rise, and we're continuing to add services each year. And a shout-out to our team, which, who just won the Magno Award for excellence in service to students. But this year was social-emotional, but we won the Magno Award two years ago, three years ago, for our ELL population. So shout-out to those, to our programs and the support we provide, English language learners. And this is our special needs population. So this is, these are our special need students, and we can see that there still was a pandemic impact. And you still see that we're, we're starting to see enrollment go back up for special needs populations as we move out of the pandemic. So the first area of our budget, I want to focus on is student success, because that's a very important part of our budget. We obviously want to prioritize ways that will improve, increase student outcomes and addressing the needs of student, of our students. So this year, we are looking, targeting in this budget, the FY twenty-three budget, to continue to increase ESL teachers. Look, again, seeing the projected growth. We want to match that growth and make sure we keep the teacher-student ratio down so that those classes do not get too large. The state provides some level of resources for that, but we want to continue to focus on, on supports. We also want to look to see bilingual teaching assistants, teachers who, teaching assistants in classrooms who may speak multiple languages to support our in-class environments, because we also have, in addition to having students, ELL students who receive services, we have ELL students who exit the program. And when they exit the program, they are still ELL students. They just have reached a certain level. And it might be helpful to have bilingual educators in the buildings to support students in their classroom environments. So that's another service. Assessment specialist is also a support position for ELL, making sure that those students are doing well in their assessments, and we're tracking their progress. We also are continuing to add resources that'll provide tiered support for students in math, science, social studies, and advanced courses as well. And we want to continue to focus on our class sizes at the early elementary literacy and math areas. We will continue to see increases, and, and one of the things we know is that we were not able to fill all of our VPI positions this year because of a lack of teachers. So, but we, but that was not because of a lack of students' interest or families who have applied. So we want to continue to be able to provide additional teachers and resources so that we can continue to add students on while keeping those class sizes at a manageable level. Largest area of our budget will always be compensation, and the focus on compensation will always be the bottom line, because we need to retain, attract, retain, and quality teachers, bus drivers, and other things. So I'll spend a little bit of time talking about our compensation plan and what we, what we hope to accomplish this year with our compensation objectives. It is our top priority, and it is where we spend the majority of our money. When we look at our compensation priorities, Newport News must have a market competitive compensation rate that attracts and retains the best staff. As you'll see on a, on a, on a slide following this, we are, right now, we, we do provide the largest, the greatest level of compensation for teachers on the peninsula. And it's important that we stay there, because we're also the largest school division on the peninsula, and we are in the middle of a teacher shortage. So with that being said, retaining our staff, attracting great, great staff is very important to us. So our goals this year, and I want to point out the, the difference between just a straight five percent and what we, what we have done traditionally over the past three to four years. We provide a flat general salary increase, which, as you see on this slide, is five percent, which is the state recommending, and they're paying, they're paying for a part of that, which are just the SOQ positions. To give everyone a five percent raise costs about thirteen million dollars. That is, that exceeds what the state is providing us on each year of the biennium. But in addition to that, we also work on salary compression. So you also see another two point two million dollars there, which we have done specifically over the last three years, working on the decompression of our scales. But what that means is that our employees don't necessarily receive just a five percent raise over the past three years. They've received a range, right? So the range this year is still in the area of five point two to seven percent with an average raise of six point five percent for teachers. Okay? And we've done that the last three years. So our raise last year was five percent. But that did not mean that everyone received a five percent raise. That range was still between five, I think it went as high as seven point seven last year in some cases with, with teachers. So that's decompressing our scales. If you recall, we, we decompressed our scales from, from, from year twelve up to thirty. This year, we're focused on years six through eleven. Okay? And, and that will allow teachers, those teachers to have a larger, larger read. So that, that's where the additional two point two comes in. Then we're also looking at adding another a hundred thousand to increase the starting teacher pay. And we've noticed that the only area of our salary compensation scale that we continue to work on is entry-level teachers and making sure that we're very competitive there. So we are looking at increasing that entry-level pay at this time between forty, from forty-seven to fifty, to fifty million, fifty thousand. I think everybody would get it. I think I'd go back and teach. To fifty thousand, to fifty thousand. And, and that, we believe that will, that will keep us remain, remain competitive in the regional market for entry-level positions. Again, I'll reiterate to our teachers who are listening tonight that we are the highest-paying employer on, on the peninsula for teachers. And our average raise will be six point five percent with a range between five and seven percent, which has traditionally been the case over the past few years, which is why we've given significant raises to remain competitive. We want to adjust the minimum starting pay to fifteen dollars per hour for our lowest-paid, paid employees. But we also are focusing, focusing specifically on bus drivers, positions like bus drivers and custodians and teacher assistants this year to make sure that those, that they have a competitive wage, because we are seeing some competitors now outside of education who are attracting our staff, and I'll show you tonight where we are going to be very competitive against those employers. So when we look at where we are right now, as I mentioned here, we hire teachers on a bachelor's degree or master's degree. When you look at the peninsula, we are the highest-paying employer on the peninsula in most areas except in, with, with master's degrees in the area of entry level, zero, zero, zero teachers. And we hope to address that this year. So we, we hope to be the highest-paying employer across the board of this, of this scale as we make some adjustments to our salary scales this year. So that's the focus, and I believe our compensation strategy will allow us to continue to work on that and maintain that, what we have gained over the past few years. In areas of retaining, retaining bus drivers, we have made significant progress. When you look over the last few years in terms of bus driver salaries, we have made some significant progress. We, in two thousand and eighteen, we were, we're doing very well. But then we looked and everyone wanted to catch up, so we had to do a little bit more. And as you can see in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty, FY twenty twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, we exceeded fifteen, the starting salary of fifteen in the FY twenty twenty-one budget for bus drivers. But in, in terms of our current year, well, we went up to fifteen eighty with the increase, the salary increase they received last year. We still have divisions that are making a concerted effort to make it a very competitive process for bus, for bus drivers. So we want to do a little bit more, and we'll address that this evening. So one of the things we did for research for this, for the board was who are, who are our competitors outside of public education? Who are we competing against to retain bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, teaching assistants? Just, just, we have to keep in mind that we are in, in a, in an area where many of our businesses and educators, we're, we're seeing a lack of employees, and it's becoming very competitive to, to get to attract employees. So when you look here, you're seeing some of the entry-level positions for Amazon, FedEx, UPS, other areas, and we're looking in seventeen to nineteen-dollar range in some of those areas as being where, where we see entry-level positions. So how are we planning to compete? We're, we're going to, we're going to exceed it. We're just going to, we're just going to blow past it. And make, make, make salary, a starting salary for bus drivers not an issue for, at least for the foreseeable future. We're already paying a starting salary this year of fifteen eighty. That makes the midpoint for a bus driver who's been with us for fifteen years, their current range would probably be around twenty dollars and ninety-seven cents. Their max would be twenty-seven dollars and thirty cents. So what is our recommendation? Based on making our lowest-paid employees a minimum of fifteen dollars, we have to incrementally increase all other employees and bus drivers included. So their starting salary this year for a bus drive, starting, starting hourly rate, not salary, would be twenty dollars and sixteen cents. The mid would be for those drivers who are currently with us, anywhere between six to fourteen years, may see as high as twenty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. And the max, if we approve this budget, would be for fit, for, for bus drivers who've been driving with us for fifteen or more years, thirty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. Okay? So that's, that's how you address that escalation. And then the key would be in the years to come to maintain that by making sure we're, we're continuing to look at our competitive, competitors around the area, and we're continuing to make adjustments to our bus drivers. We cannot run a division without bus drivers, teacher assistants, custodians, cafeteria workers, all of those, all of those valuable employees, and we are making similar adjustments to make sure the minimum starting salary goes to fifteen dollars, and there will be incremental increase, increases associated with those positions. So I gave two examples on this slide, because this slide will be available to staff and to the community as well, just to see what it looks like with an employee who is five years, five-year salary, their current hourly, hourly wage is seventeen point, seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents. If we apply just the five percent, it goes to eighteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. But we know we put, we do experience adjustments. Same thing with teachers. And it's the same effect. So the experience adjustments, when you give them the value, adjust their value based on their years of experience, brings their, their salary, their hourly rate up to twenty-two forty-seven. So that would be what, that would be an example where we're spending money where we need to spend it to make sure that we can be solvent and be whole moving forward. And I think that would be a great draw for, if the board considers this budget, will be a great draw for, for maintaining the employees we have, but also attracting new employees who would drive, work in our school divisions for an hourly wage. So the other areas we're focused on in terms of, of employees is building our own, is, is growing our own employees, making sure that we have a premier employee workforce, making sure that we have great professional development. But what we found is that coaching is very important for teachers as well and for staff. It's not just getting them in the classroom. How do you support them while they're in the classroom with mentors, with coaching, with the resources that they need? So we need to continue to invest in that, and we've targeted, not only targeted that with CARES Act funding, but we're also continuing to target that in our operating budget as well. We're looking at providing employees additional employee tuition reimbursement. Right now, our employee tuition reimbursement, and I'm going by memory here, is six hundred dollars per semester reimbursed. And we're, we're proposing to increase that to two thousand. So, and that's, that's with the past class, making sure they pass the class, submitted their information so that employee working with Newport News, similar to when I was a teacher, could go to school, afford to take classes, get reimbursed, use that reimbursement to pay for the next semester, and you go from having a bachelor's degree to a master's degree to a doctor's degree, doctorate, right? But making sure that we invest in our employees, because we need that educated workforce in order to better serve our students. Launching career advancement training programs, we have some already. We're going to continue to work on ways that we can grow our own employees, and we're going to invest in them to make sure that we can have our next hourly worker in our, in our school division. If they want to become a teacher, if they want to become, work in a clerical field, whatever it may be, we want to have pathways where employees can look for advancement in our school division and provide some of the resources that we need to get there. So, looking in the area of student and staff wellness, we're very, we've been, and I will go back to the Magno Award at this time, and say that we have recently won a national award for our services in the area of social, emotional, and physical well-being. And we started this path with the board a few years ago by starting to invest in clinical licensed social workers and psychologists. And we started saying, we need more of these professionals who are working not only outside of special, the special needs area, but also providing direct service to students and families. And we're continuing to invest in that, in that. We are one of the only divisions in the state that does so. And we recently submitted a, for a national award, the Magno Award, and we were silver recipients of that award for the services we provide students in that area. It is one of the best things I think we do in Newport News, and it was timely, because we started this, this investment before the pandemic. And it has served us well, but we still have a lot of students who are on waiting lists, who are still waiting to see their, their mental health therapist. Sometimes it takes a while to get there. We would like to continue to expand those services and continue to work with local partners also that provide, that we partner with. But we believe that we continue to invest in this area until we have enough to distribute across the school division to provide that service and meet students' needs in a timely way. We can only improve from there. Another big item in this area is going to be expanding middle school sports. We would like to add football, wrestling, boys and girls soccer, and to make cheerleading. Uh we would like to add football, wrestling, boys and girls soccer, and to make cheerleading at the middle school a an act- actual sport. We do have cheerleading at middle school, but I think it's more of a kind of a club type activity. Um and really work with those uh to build coaches, build student athletes, say, and and increase the expectations as we would at the high school, allowing them to work with our high school student athletes. It it builds a lot of leadership development. It allows students to lead healthy lifestyles, make great choices at the middle school level. And it's a great draw for families who want to see their students engaged in some activities and to be able to compete um at a at a younger age. So we are very interested in expanding middle school sports, and we have uh planted the um investment in this budget to support that. So I talked about the cost of that, and and roughly the first year is really um nominal. It's really assessing our bleachers, lighting, fields. Where do we get athletic trainers from? Coaching stipends, we have to, we have to, um next year, we will be in the process of hiring coaches, referees, um uniforms. There's a lot of detail that has to take place, so we need that seed money. I believe this cost may go up a little bit in future years as we start to play. But we want to have the have the dollars necessary to make sure we're ready and in a good position and it's well planned out so that we can have students compete in a safe way. Area that we focused on is school safety, and that's becoming becoming even more across the nation. We have to continue to work on that. Um we do have uh have a need at Huntington as we continue to um expand Huntington by adding another grade level next year. We want to have a so sing a solely um designated middle school security officer for uh for the Huntington um program uh school. Want to continue to work on intercom and security cameras upgrades. We have continued to do this over many years. I'm I'm in the division upgrading our our intercom and security camera systems. And then also making sure that we have both stand alone and wand metal detection for our random searches and other 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 necessary needs on each of our campuses as needed to make sure that we can maintain a safe environment in our schools. Technology um and balancing the budget, we've we've put that, we've kind of leveled out two point seven and two point seven in the area of technology and capital. Um and we'll talk about how we balance this budget in a moment. But uh these no, that one of these numbers went down uh went down a hundred thousand, but uh we still feel we have us, the the key items we want to make sure we focus on. Looking at um continuing, look at our student computers, our network infrastructure, uh access to STEM cards, iPads, iPods for the younger kids, and then also networks and security. We have, now that we have all of this, we have to maintain it. And that will be at a cost. A lot of it's covered in CARES Act funding. Um but we are continuing to look at, okay, where can we use operating dollars to to continue to support our technol- our one to one technology and our infrastructure and technology moving forward. Operating and maintenance, um level both of them again out at two point seven and two point seven. Um so where we have the metal detectors, the security cameras, those items already accounted for in this in these dollars. And again, that's under school safety. But then on the bottom area with the one point seven is electrical, HVAC, carpentry and flooring. We have taken some items out of this list to make sure that we balance the budget. Um so there were some plumbing items and some other things that we have uh moved, and we are deferring those. We're not, we're not saying they won't get done, but we're deferring those items to make sure we use other available funds other than planning those in the tw- in in this operating budget. But we had to, in order to balance the budget, we had to make sure that some areas were cut. So other things we're looking at, enhance partnerships. Um we're bringing back field trips and exploratory act, exploratory activities for kids. Getting them out of the, out of the buildings. It's time to for kids to learn, you know, to get out in the world and make sure they're seeing some of the great things um that we have to offer in in not only this area but around the state and around the nation. So we are going to make sure that we have um opportunities for students to have field trips, both virtual and 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 travel. Making sure we have the resources, schools have the resources to plan those and make sure they are supportive of our curriculum and expand the opportunities of our curriculum. So uh that's something we are targeting in this budget. Um under stewardship of resources, we always want to make sure that we are maintaining um our technology and and that that and and these are aligned items with the strategic plan, just putting them in the in the right bucket. Um acquiring the materials and supplies to support academic initiatives and uh address learning loss. We want to give good stories of our money in this budget. Um I think the biggest thing we've done in this area under stewardship of resources is we, every position that we're targeting for adding this year to our operating budget, we uh made it budget neutral by repurposing current existing F T Es in our in our budget. I think there's nothing probably more fiscally res- resourceful than doing that. Is to add the positions we need, repurpose positions at zero additional dollars on our um to our operational budget. So that's the biggest item that's not listed there, but I think that really speaks to the work that our budget team is doing to build this budget. So what are the staffing requests? I just kind of. So we look at eighteen, we have eighteen positions that we're considering adding in F Y twenty twenty three. And the net cost is zero dollars because we're repurposing existing unfilled F T Es in our budget. Uh and that if by you by doing that, as we saw, we had some student, some lower student numbers. Our student enrollment is trending down at this particular time, so it allowed us to do that in a in a in a very um conservative way. But it will allow us not to add that one, I think it was one point two million dollars to our, to this operating budget because of those repurposed F T Es. And those positions, just to go through the list to see how aligned they are, we're talking about the assessment specialist. Uh attendance is is going to be, continue to be a very important piece. Uh chronic absenteeism is real in Newport News and in other places. And coming out of pandemic, we need more interaction, more active engagement. Uh so we know, we found a need for an additional um support from an attendance officer. Um we talked about the bilingual of teacher assistants, the uh uh looking at uh support, providing H R some additional support for all the programs that they have um and partnerships and other things that their initiatives that they're implementing. Um looking at uh continuing to support technology through staffing um with an infrastructure specialist, instructional tech coordinator. Um and we're also looking at uh improving our um, looking at testing, mental health therapist, we talked about. Can um our record specialists are part time, um so we just, so that one is really making two part time positions of full time. Uh so that's an increase, there's not adding one. Um adding a school guidance counselor based on our criteria. Uh school security officer for, again, Huntington Middle School and a student support specialist to continue to provide that great mental health support in our schools. Uh so total of eighteen positions that were identified through the budget development process, which we feel we we feel we can manage with a net zero budget impact. So getting into he- getting into health benefits, that's the other area we really needed to focus on because that's the other area that's going to impact and cr- and continue to impact our bottom line moving forward. And what we have to say about health costs is there was a impact with um with the pandemic, and we did see an increase in premiums. And as premiums increase, we have to continue, we'll normally get an additional as uh as claims increase, excuse me, we'll normally get an increase in premiums for the next year. We are a single source or fully sourced school division for our health insurance, which means we have to maintain a healthy fund balance to cover all of our claims. Uh and in order to remain solvent, usually the school division and employees will cover the costs or increases in in premium hikes. Uh over the past few years, we, the school division has taken care of all of the premium increases and have not passed those costs on to employees. Uh we have to continue to look at reasonable ways to maintain a healthy um um a healthy insurance process, so we so we want to make sure this year we are going to ask that we split that cost with employees uh to make sure that we can remain solvent with our health insurance. And it's a good year because over the next two years, we are looking at over a ten percent baseline, ten percent increase in compensation for employees. And as you know how we do, it might be for some employees, it might be as high as twelve to fourteen percent. So with that being said, we feel that passing costs on, uh some of the costs on to employees will not uh will not be an overburden there um their bottom line or their pockets. So what is the impact? I know employees will ask that, and I'll probably get that question about twenty times after this presentation. The most popular plan for our employees to take is the employee only, or single employee. That's where most sixty percent of our employees choose that option and pay pay for their premium. So we've we've uh calculated that the overall impact would be an approximately thirty to thirty five dollar per month increase for those employees. Now, obviously, if you add children or you do the family plan, the cost may vary and be a little different based on that plan. But uh thirty, for for sixty percent of those employees who are, who do access our insurance as a single employee, thirty to thirty five dollars is is a rough impact of that. Versus anywhere up to a three thousand nine hundred dollar salary increase the first um in year one of this budget. So with that being said, I think we can, we uh we're recommending that we do um have that one point five million dollars total of the three point seven million dollar increase, co- one point five covered by employee um health health premium increases. The division covered the other portion. So that's just a slide, just reiterating uh what I was, what I was saying here, and it and and over the past few years, just important for our employees and our families to know that uh over the past few years, twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen, we haven't made any changes to employee and um um from that standpoint. Uh twenty sixteen, we did a twen- a ten percent increase for employee premium changes. Uh we reduced employee premiums fifteen percent in twenty seventeen and uh gave a three month ta- uh premium holiday in December, from December twenty seventeen to February twenty eight. But um since that time, we have not passed on any additional cost for premiums to employees. Okay, so getting back to revenue, and I'm nearing the end of this uh budget, getting back to this original slide, we just talked about this number, the nineteen point eight again will deter be determined by the general assembly. That nineteen point eight could go as high as if the Senate's budget is the most popular, or it could be lowered um a little bit by the by the House, House's version. So we we um we do have a firm commitment from the city manager to propose a two point eight million dollar increase in our operating revenue. Um based on the that figure of nineteen point eight, our target number of increase for this year is twenty two point six. And what I what I say to the board tonight is that's what we're living with right now until we get the any number, any additional numbers from the state. So anything else that comes out between now and March twenty second, we'll obviously make an adjustment. Um but the twenty two point six increase is what we have calculated these additions based on. And we have balanced this budget. Okay, this just, I I included the pie charts here. I think you've seen those standard charts for the F Y twenty three budget. Um so just showing where our revenue comes from. The state usually is our largest revenue provider, sixty, in this, in this budget, proposed budget. Their increase would make their state revenue um to sixty six point three percent of our budget. That's an increase. It's the largest increase we've seen in a while. The city um has increased their uh their revenue by tw- by two point eight million dollars. Um their revenue um would be thirty two point three percent of our budget. We get a small percent from the state, roughly around three point one percent. Other sources around point nine, but the majority of our revenue of that three hundred and fifty nine point four million dollar budget would be from state revenue. And uh these other slides just show where the money is spent, so they are more just showing that the majority of our dollars are spent on personnel. Two hundred and fifty nine point nine percent of our budget is spent on personnel and personnel who support instructional services. Right? Which is what it, where it should be. Transportation, operations and maintenance, facilities and debt, technology. But uh admin at attendance and health, uh roughly about six point two percent of our budget is administration, attendance and health related. Staffing, fifty percent of our of our staffing is fif- is tea, our teachers. Um and that doesn't, that number right there does not count teachers, um instructional staff or support staff who are paid through grants, right? So we do have staff who are paid to grant services, grant uh awarded grants as well, which is why the number of employees we have is much higher than than the than the numbers reflected there. But the budgeted F T S is three thousand eight hundred sixty one point five. Okay, not, that does not include grants. So with that being said, I'm going to move forward, and and this is just broken down by uh, you've seen this slide before, broken down by the strategic plan. Uh what are the areas of strategic plan and where do we support that with actual staffing and supports? Uh under student success, academic services, sixty five percent of that budget relates to student success and providing academic services. Employee expertise, that's four point nine. Partnerships, um two point two percent. Stewardship of resources, roughly twenty percent of our budget there, and staff and wellness, we can attribute six point seven percent of our budget to that. So this slide is probably one of the most important ones because this is how we balanced it. And uh and this, and if we get, if our revenue changes, we'll have to go back and continue to to get to zero, right? Twenty two point six is um increase in revenue. We have to make sure that we, our our needs are are the money that the additions to the budget do not exceed that twenty two point six right now at this particular point. How do we do that? Um if you look at the uh column there, uh there's the cost of the five percent general increase, thirteen million. Um there's the cost of of our compression adjustments, two point um or experience adjustments, you you may call it, two point two million dollars. Um the increase in in teacher starting pay, uh going to an increase in that zero of the to make sure we have a very competitive entry level teacher, teaching pay. Uh adjusting to fifteen dollars an hour for all employees, two point eight million dollars. Handling the compression or experience adjustments for classified staff, three point five million dollars. There's that big investment in bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, teacher assistants. Making sure that we also do experience adjustments there that makes their salaries more competitive, their um hourly wages more competitive. When we look at the turn, uh when we look co- continuing down that first column, the health plan increase was three point seven million dollars. And then we look at technology and operate and capital, two point seven and two point seven, and then we have the point eight for middle school athletics. Okay, all of that totaled thirty one point five million dollars, right? To balance it, we had to look at where could we, where where um was some of the money that we could actually pull from in our current operational budget to lower that number to twenty two point six. We calculated that we are going to have a lot of uh some turnover this year with uh that's when a thirty one, a thirty year, a thirty one year year teacher um or a staff member retires and you hire a zero, you know, another another teacher, right? So that that's the attrition and turnover. Um so turnover and attrition, uh roughly about four point two million, um we can calculate in there as um to balance the cost of the additional cost that um of that budget. And then we look at the employee share of health, of the healthcare premium, one point five million dollars. Uh and then a one time um cost and department reductions of three point two. And that's just looking around our department's unspent revenue in this budget. Okay, where can we trim the fat? Okay, where can we pull dollars to make sure that we have, that we can compensate or reallocate or repurpose? Three point two million dollars. It allowed us to get that number, eight, eight point nine million dollars that would go towards balancing the budget, and we are set right now at twenty two point six. Okay, so the only thing that would change this at this particular time are if the board adds any um um discussion and there are any changes on your end um or the state comes through with additional revenue, right? And then we would go back and we we may have, and we would keep the board informed between now and that time of any changes that come from those, from that uh si- situation. Okay. So tonight, I I have two asks. One is for the board to consider um approving the F Y twenty twenty three proposed budget of three hundred and fifty nine point four million dollars at the March twenty second school board meeting. And I have an additional request tonight of the board to consider um using s- unspent revenue in F Y twenty two, now that we know that there will be some level of whole harness um and um that comes out of the general assembly this year. Uh for A D M, we do have some additional revenue that we can put towards um employee bonuses. Uh and I would propose that we use that unspent revenue in F Y twenty two to provide a one thousand dollar raise for all eligible full time employees and five hundred dollars for eligible part time employees. Um and if the board considers that at the March twenty second um board meeting, we will expedite that bonus for employees. I base that recommendation because a lot of our employees are doing a lot mo- uh more this year because of because of a lack of some staff, right? So when we have less bus drivers, the ones we have have to work harder. We have less personnel in the building, the ones, the personnel in the building have to work harder. Uh we have pro- provided some compensation, but all situations are not, do not um do not qualify for compensation. This would allow us to reward our employees for having a tough year, but also showing that we value them, um that we respect the work that they're currently doing under cir- under circumstances and that we want them to continue working with Newport News Public Schools and consider this an um a division that cares about the work that they're doing for students. So with that being being said, um the next steps in the process is March fifteenth, Mr. Chairman. Uh you will have a pub, the board will have a public hearing on the proposed budget. Um we will have information online regarding tonight's presentation, so our, we believe our community will be informed. Uh and the school board meeting on March twenty second is when the board will uh consider this request. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. At this point, I would be happy to answer any questions, myself or my very talented staff um at this time.
All right. Questions from the board? Yes, Ms. Amy.
Um. I guess I'm not sure if it's two questions or one. It's kind of on 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 teaching and class size and that sort of thing. I was looking through the report about notes from the state as far as um you know, class sizes depending on the schools and needs in the school, you know, different schools have different preferred um class sizes, and I wanted to, and maybe, I don't know who can speak to this. Um but the comment on when we've switched from some full ti- full time employees positions that aren't being filled to ones that are filling, some that are being filled aren't necessarily, say, a teacher in a classroom. So are we, how are we doing as far as class size? Do we feel we still have enough for that while shifting the full time employees over to these new positions? Um and then I had a question on. Um and then I had a question on um the proposals coming out of the House and Senate and the governor's budget on reading specialists. So that we can, and so so that I can have a better understanding of the impact. One proposal had to do with adding grades four and five, and then the other one adjusted the numbers. But not knowing what the current numbers are, reading specials for students from one through three, it's a little bit hard to get in paradigm.
We can get that to you, because I haven't seen the exact breakdown of what those numbers would be um based on that ratio. I know we did it for counselors a few years ago when we lowered the ratio to two fifty across the board per counselor. We looked at where we were in 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 um consideration of that, uh I'll be happy to get that that information to you. The other piece is that the FTEs that we use to uh to to repurpose were historically unfilled FTEs. So we're so we're not cutting into something by um lowering the number of staff that we're act- in actually filled positions um uh historically. So we will look over the last few years and if we see that we had a set number in a certain class that we're that that continued to be unfilled. We look there first, because it doesn't impact our bottom line today. Um so that's that's where we're where we're getting those FTEs from. But um that number is, that's a very good question, and we can actually look at our uh our staff positions to see what what the breakdown would be in terms of that. Senate version, I think it was the Senate version that broke it down to five fifty.
It went by number of students.
Five fifty per per uh, um we'll look at that number and see how many that would equate to. And where and where we actually stand with that, I'll I'll, as a follow up, I'll send that back out to the board.
Other questions? Yeah, Mr. Harris.
Oh, Mr. Ely.
Um I just wanna say thank you for um the major adjustments in pay. I was at Wawa the other day, just talking to the cashier, I said, hey, how much you make, I thought he was hired. And she said he's starting off at fifteen, she said, but I make seventeen eighty six. I said seventeen eighty six, and that just kinda, that kinda um surprised me, I said. As a school division, we have to compete with Wawas and other places that was once at nine to ten dollars an hour, now at seventeen dollars an hour. So I um I definitely think that we are on the cut of edge to say, hey, we're not gonna deal with all these major corporations that's coming to our city. Taking up our plow is we're gonna jump a front, we're gonna jump ahead of it, instead of nickel and diamond situation, so. So I definitely think that's amazing. Also excited about the middle school sports, um I was at the One City Marathon event over the weekend. And a parent came up to me, was was so excited about the middle school sports, but her son said, can you please ask if they can add tennis and golf? So maybe. If the money is in availability of budget, even maybe a few years or down the road, or I don't know if it's available this year. He was definitely interested in tennis and golf. And my last question is, um with the contracts for reimbursement for going back to school. Is there a certain amount of years that their employee have to sign a contract, say, hey, we pay new reimbursement, you must be with Newport News two or three more years?
Now, that we are working out details for specific things, if we pay for that employee to get that diploma, that that de- degree. Then yes, there will be a service obligation, if there, if it's a split cost, we're looking at just providing the service to allow. For the employee to continue to work through to afford pu- um additional um education. Uh but uh Mrs. Farish is here, did you wanna add to anything there that I'm missing or?
No, that's correct.
Okay, so so if we pay for for Mr. Ely to go go to school and get a master's degree in mathematics. Then yes, there will be a three, uh at least a minimum three year service obligation for us to pay for that, because we're investing in you. We want you to come back and teach advanced courses for us, whatever it may be, um there would be an investment there. If you are in our tuition reimbursement program and you're paying for your tuition and books, uh that money will not cover all of your expenses. Um then we, then as long as you're making that B grade or higher, we will continue to to allow the tuition reimbursement to come through. As as a benefit for you being a Newport News Public School employee.
That's really good, and last thing, um I, we, the bonuses that you would do, the one time bonuses. What would make a employee ineligible to receive that thousand dollars or or five hundred dollars?
There are, there are certain employee employees um that may not be eligible based on their um on their position, and I think. Uh substitutes would probably be, but long term subs we're considering, because they're filling a teaching vacancy. There and then they're up there, I don't, can't think of any off, other off off the top of my head, but I'll leave HR at that.
Sub, what we call sub temporary stats, employees will not be eligible.
But employees who contract with us, um all all will, so they're only a small percentage who would not be eligible.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh thank you for the briefing or uh, how can I put it? I I discussed with a couple of people, I think I was about briefed out of meeting out, but for some strange reason, you know, the delivery, you know. Was a, was perfect, I think, you know, and I was able to, you know, follow you and understand. Um a couple of questions, the bonuses, uh do employees have other options? So if I didn't wanna take the five hundred bonus or the thousand dollar bonus in lieu of, say, twenty hours of annual leave or forty hours of annual leave. Or a combination thereof, have you all considered anything like that?
We haven't, we haven't, but uh I'll talk to, I'll talk to my staff about it, we 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 have not, I'll be honest, we are not. Usually, usually door number one is a very good door.
Right. Just one of those things, and the reason I said it, you know, some some employees may, you know, value, you know, time off, which is a thousand bucks.
I I, we'll, we'll definitely bring that back, and I wanna, I wanna reiterate, uh we gave a bonus um, not last year, the year before. Um and it was t- pre taxed, this will not be a pre taxed, our estimate of six million dollars is 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 uh if it's a thousand dollars, it will be a thousand dollars in the pocket.
Yeah.
So uh so that was, that was something we we did, and I I found that that, you know. Still money in the pocket, but I I think it just means more if you say you're getting a bonus for a thousand dollars, you actually see a thousand dollars.
And and I'm sure there's regulations probably at the state, you know, or whatever.
Well, yeah, we have to pay taxes, we would pay the taxes on it, and that would, that's the only piece that we would have to factor in.
So that's an important point, that it's gonna be a thousand dollars in the employees' pockets.
Yes.
That's after taxes, so that means we're paying the taxes for them, so it's not gonna be seven hundred and fifty dollars or some low about a thousand dollars in their pocket.
Exactly, I think, I think our employees deserve it and they've worked hard for us this year, it's been a two, last two to three years, it's been very uh. It's been getting through this pandemic and I I just believe uh it would, it would spread a lot of goodwill.
Yes, I mean, you know, again, it will, but I'm sure there's probably employees that will probably say, you know, if they offer twenty hours of annual leave, I'm gonna take it or, you know, or whatever. And just maybe just because they're in the teaching profession, you know, they um. May not have the, you know, time to do it during school year, or they may, who knows, if we have enough employees, they actually could. So just one of them things to, you know, check on and.
Well, we'll take, we'll definitely take a look at.
Okay, thanks, uh the next one, uh. And I, I don't know if Pat brought this up or what, but I was thinking of the shipyard contractors, defense contractors. That come in and work at the shipyard and they have, most of them have DOD CAT AD cars too. Because they have to get in on the facilities, some of them have secret clearances, so a a lot, majority of them fall under the DOD regulations. Have we entertained the thought of, and this, I'm sure this at the state level or even the national level. To, if they have children that come to school, to be counted under their federal supportive program versus just. Uh you know, teachers or, I mean, just instead of, you know, employees that for uses or lamely or whatever. So I I I don't, I I think we're missing or probably could be missing the opportunity to count those individuals.
Well, I know, I know it is requirement to, and DOD, uh children of DOD families does count in that um in that calculation.
Yes.
And we uh we we do receive those funds every year, and I would ask Scarlett, um. I know it's military connected youth, but also DOD families.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's, yeah, because, oh, you know, safe answer is whether it's a DOD civilian employee. Uh if, you know, their children still count, uh but the shipyard is a s- it's a, it's another entity, but they fall on a DOD.
Now, the shipyard I'd have to check on, because.
Right, well, that's what I mean, I know the rest of them.
They they are not necessarily DOD employees, they're Huntington Ingalls employees.
Right.
But we'd have to check the criteria to see if they, if they qualify for federal aid, and what you're talking about is impact aid.
Correct.
Uh and whether whether shipyard families or students of shipyard personnel would count towards impact days. And that's something we can, we can uh look into, we currently collect for DOD employees and military, military connected youth.
Who knows, we might be missing.
There's a qualification.
Yeah, we might be missing a group or something, who knows?
It it's worth looking, and we'll, we'll, we don't wanna miss any, any, any additional revenue that we should, that we should be ga- uh collecting, we definitely wanna make sure we take advantage of that.
Correct. Um I think field trips are important, I mean, when I was that age, we went on a lot of field trips and. And I I call it, uh the comparison gene is is turned on when a, when a child is. Uh have only seen, you know, one thing and and they get on a bus and they travel up sixty four, they go wherever the case may be. And that child immediately starts to compare, you know, present existence to, you know, what they see. And at an early age, you know, it's very impactful, so, you know, thank you for implement implementing that, it can change lives without you even knowing it, you know? So I think that's.
We we really like to make sure that it's not a um a barrier for our students or families. And that the cost is not too high for families for certain things like admissions and those kind of things, and transportation is usually, depending on where you're going.
Right.
If it's chartered, um so we wanna make sure we, that's not a barrier for our kids.
Well, you know, even just inside the city, you know, they will be able to see something different.
Yes, sir.
Um the middle school sports, I I I think it's a home run, I know it is, because it's gonna save those kids that normally. Will probably fall through the cracks, not all, but some, uh and I think we have a lot of um. Professional athletes that came from the seven five seven, that is probably gonna be interested in sponsoring a middle school. Supporting a middle school, so some of the things such as uniforms and equipment. There's a possibility we probably could, you know, get that supplemented through some individuals that, you know, really wants to participate. And, you know, start in middle school sports in in Newport News, so just keep that in mind when we start talking, you know, monies and budgets of where we're gonna get it from. So we might have to put together some type of a, I don't know, committee to, you know, start soliciting those individuals that was born and raised here and. Went off to do great things and have came back, you know, looking for a place to, you know, invest.
And the good thing is, a lot of our high school coaches still have those connections.
Correct.
Um so we have, we have started talking to our high school um coaches, uh moving on to activities, um athletic directors and and principals. But the goal will be to get a committee together for each one of those sports. Um that consists of high school, parks and rec, who to, who will have to look, the youth leagues. Uh and look at a more comprehensive approach, middle school's filling in that gap.
Yeah.
And um and they're, they're really excited, I I can only, I could, I wish some of, you could hear some of the things they're saying about. Just the possibility of 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 a, of expanding sports specifically in their areas, that would allow students to be more competitive.
Okay, and last one, bilingual teaching assistant. I'm I'm sure that's a, they have to be teachers, right?
No, these teacher assistants, just looking for members of the community, in your community, because you're in the north, you're in the north.
Right.
Um who may be bilingual and may be eligible to become a teacher assistant, so.
Okay.
These are regular teacher assistant positions, but we're looking at maybe taking a few um FTEs and saying, hey, why, why, you know, I was recently in elementary school and we had. A high number of English language learners in our, in our um uh dual immersion program.
Correct.
And I was told a lot of those students were kids who had test, who were had tested out of E- of English language services. Um so having a a Spanish speaking teacher assistant around to support instruction. Because now we're having a lot of kids who are exiting the program, but they're still in math and English and other things, and just having those bilingual um assistants allows to build relationships.
Right.
Um especially if they're members from the, from the community, um who will be eligible, they don't have to have a teacher certification, they're teacher assistants. And um would allow that teacher also to to be better served in the classroom, so. Um I think this is a good time to look at who we hire as teacher assistants and uh and be more purposeful, since we are seeing a larger number of. English language learners, um students continue to enroll in Newport News um over the past five to six years. It's time to put more s- more bilingual staff in our, in our buildings that can support classroom instruction.
Right, and 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 probably, we we probably could start with, you know, some of the seniors. You know, they may have extra time on their hand or whatever the case may be, that are bilingual, that, you know, understand what takes place in a classroom, because they're still there until they graduate. So maybe we could tap in, you, who knows, maybe a volunteer call, hey, if you got time, you're a senior or whatever the case may be. You know, you're out of class, I don't know if they're still doing that, do they still like go home at ten o'clock or something, and you know, they finish with classes as seniors, you know, do they still do that?
Se- uh senior students.
Some class, you know.
Some have short, yeah, some have adjusted schedules based on their uh uh early release, early, it's early release. Um based on their, uh and hopefully we'll be able to put some of them to work in the next couple of years.
Right, correct, yeah, and so, yeah, you know, maybe, maybe there might be some volunteers that, you know, could.
Could be teacher assistants, yeah.
Yeah, so just one.
Or in a classroom help, or a helper.
Alright, so I'm done with my recommendations, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, uh any, any other questions? Yes, Dr. Best.
Um first of all, I would like to thank you as well, Dr. Parker, for excellent um report. The budgeting process for me is one of the most overwhelming duties, uh being a school board member. And um sometimes it makes me feel like I'm missing something, because it's just so much in this um book. But thank you for chunking, well, we talk about chunking and instruction and chunking, and it made me, um it helped me to understand much better. I have a comment um regarding our ELL, I would like to um commend Newport News and I'm proud to be a part of Newport News and the services that we provide. For our ELL, ELL students, um. I know there's a controversial kind of issue going on across the water, and it just, when I heard about that though. I just felt a sense of peace and it made me feel good to be a part um of this division and and the services that we provide um for our students. I think we talked about this in a work session, how we want to be comparable, compat- um um. Be able to compete with um surrounding districts for the starting salary. And I believe a division announced yesterday their starting salary was fifty one thousand, are we?
Well, I will say that this budget proposes to bring our starting salary to fifty dollars, and that is what we have communicated um. Um in our previous presentations. Um I think announcing something and approving something are two different things, I think if that uh districts go ahead and approve a budget. This board can easily come back and we may, once our revenue picture is clear, and if you wanna amend your budget, which I believe you will have to do it based on the state's. Budget, there there will probably be an amendment, and you wanna make an adjustment to that figure, um that would be a great time to do so. Based on real information uh from other divisions that have an approved budget um for for that amount. Um so that's, that's something I think we had discussed in conversation earlier, our goal is to be the highest paying school division in this, on the peninsula.
Mm-hmm.
It can't control what hands, happens on the south side, um we are the largest school, school division, um and that is the area where we lag behind. So we, I I believe we do need to make a formal approach to address that, whether it's in this um on the twenty second or whether it will be in April. Uh with an amended budget, I I believe it's time the board addressed it.
Okay, and um finally, I um was speaking with some residents in North Newport News last night. And one of the things that they were most excited about was middle school sports, that was the questions. So I think that's gonna be a really good thing all around, um and parents brought up about how kids are. That participate in activities that we know they're more committed to school, they do better academically, social, so they were real excited about that as well.
And and I I'll give Mr. Brown some kudos, he's been in my ear for the last three years about middle school sports, so I'm gonna publicly say that, and I thank him for that, because it it's definitely something we. Uh area where we can do some great work. In addition to middle school sports, we are engaged in our high school programs and saying, hey, what can we do to support you? And that that's part of what they really are are also engaged with, because we have great high school teams, a lot of kids who give. Blood, sweat and tears for for Newport News to to represent their schools. And we wanna make sure that they have the resources also at the high school level to be competitive. Uh so we're looking at field conditions, we're looking at their weight rooms, we're looking at things that, any barriers that they may have to having a. Our kids should have just, should have the best, we look at other school divisions and what they offer for sports. We shouldn't, we shouldn't shy away from it, we wanna make sure we have the best facilities um and conditions for our kids to compete, and uh that's what the, some of these discussions are are turning into. So I believe, you know, the rising tide raises all boats, we'll see Parks and Rec get more involved, we'll see our middle school programs uh come up, and then we'll also see our high school teams. Very well supported moving forward, and these are conversations that were happening right now.
Thank you, Dr. Best, any other questions? Alright. Well, then, uh, Dr. Parker, I have just one question, and that's in that area of of the compression, so we've talked about that. That's been a mission ever since I've been on the board, to bring our step, our, the gap between the steps into a manageable. Uh area about, I think it was a thousand dollars between steps we were targeting years back. And we think, we thought last year we were very close, and so I wanna ask this year, how how close are we to. Compression no longer being an issue where we can just on an annual basis, do you just be talking about a general salary increase as opposed to uh making major adjustments to the steps?
After this year, the ma- the the area we'll have to focus on is years one through five, zero through five, because we'll, we'll have six through thirty one decompressed. Um so that's where we. Um, so that's where we, where we'll, where we'll need to focus, um, on. So we've come a long ways from, on a thirty-one year scale down to, um, then this year we're focused on six, you know, years six through eleven. They'll see the largest increase as we decompress. Um, last year it was twelve through fifteen or sixteen. And this, and this year's budget, they saw the largest raise. So it just, it's working its way down as we decompress. Um, and again, just for those teachers who are listening, the average raise for employees for teachers will be six point five percent. And the ranges of raises will be in areas between five and seven percent depending on where you are on the employee scale.
And so potentially after next year, we could be done with the decompression.
That's right.
Activity. And if we maintain our, if we maintain salary increases, we can keep the compression.
The only thing that, that can slow us down is if you have a year where you don't give any raises, um, just a bonus or something. And that could be an economy factor of the economy. That caused the problem in the first place. Um, we are looking at raising the entry, um, scale, um, level at the, um, uh, at year zero for, for teachers. If that, depending on what that figure is, it may cause some compression, a little bit more compression at the lower parts of the scales. We have to work that piece out, but I believe next year will be, we should be, uh, provided everything, all the Ts crossed and, and Is dotted. We should have our full-scale decompress for employee, um, experience at the teacher scale, the teacher scale. We'll still be working on classified, um, and that's, that's still great work. We can do that as we see that's becoming the most competitive area. Um, in, in terms of our employee groups.
And then just a, uh, a further point of clarification on the bus drivers. The bus driver pay, what is the minimum pay going to, going to move up to now?
So going back to that slide, um.
Fifteen, sixty-seven.
And I think, uh, I, I believe this will be well received.
Fifteen, sixty-seven.
Twenty sixteen is the starting salary, twenty six, twenty sixteen is the minimum. Uh, mid-range, year, um, year six to fourteen experience, twenty-six seventy-six. And then maximum of, uh, a driver with fifteen plus years experience, uh, should see an, uh, should be making thirty-four, um, thirty-four eighty-three. A maximum of thirty-four.
And with that twenty dollar minimum, so we're now moving up to our, our bus driver pay will be at the twenty dollar minimum. And with that, we'll still keep our signing bonuses for bus drivers going into next year.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, uh, the recommend, the recommendation from HR, if I ask them, will be to maintain that for a year, for at least a year to see our numbers of, number of bus drivers go up. So what we have, we're, we're initiating a lot of things, but we have to see them materialize into actual drivers driving, driving buses. So, uh, I believe until we see, until we actually see those employees, uh, in our ranks, uh, then we may phase back on that. But I think we keep those incentives, um, si- signing bonus of three thousand dollars. Uh, referral of drivers, two thousand. And, um, um, in place for our bus, current bus drivers, if they refer a driver to us and based on these wages, they shouldn't be too hard to get a two thousand dollar, um, referral. And then a three thousand dollar signing bonus with wages like this, I, I hope to see our ranks, um, increase. And I hope our, I don't, I hope I don't see our middle school parents parked around the corner to pick up their students next year. And we can, and we can get, get no buses on the road. So our transportation schedule is worked out. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Parker. All right. So with, with that, we will now move on to, um, matters or comments about the superintendent. So, Dr. Parker, if you want to come back or you can do it from there.
Well, I, I only have two things I want to say. Happy International Women's Day for all the ladies. I, I celebrated my staff earlier today, uh, with I'm Every Woman by Chaka Khan. And, uh, and the, and the only other thing I'd like to say is let's, let's continue to raise up the Menchville basketball teams, both boys and girls. Boys had a tough loss the other, um, by three points at the end of the game. The girls are moving on and advancing to state, state competition and let's, let's wish them well. And that, that concludes my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Wonderful. All right. So now we are on to, uh, matters by the school board and we'll start with Dr. Best tonight.
Again, thank you for your report. Thank you to all the staff for the hard work that you put into preparing, um, for the budget. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best. All right, uh, Mr. Ely.
Just want to thank the staff for putting together this major presentation. I know a lot of hard work and time and dedication came into it. Thanks to all the board members for giving the superintendent, you know, different input on what you want to see the vision for Newport News. And everybody just have a wonderful weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Uh, Mr. Harris.
Sure. Uh, thank you to, uh, the leadership, divisional leadership team, executive directors, directors, uh, superintendent, budget advisory committee and superintendent senior staff and all of the employees. Appreciate all the hard work and, uh, looking forward to, uh, continuing to do a year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, uh, Ms. Amen.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. Uh, just thank you to everyone for all the work you've, um, put into the budget. I know in, in my day-to-day work, I often deal with changing laws and changing facts. And it's hard to come up with a plan, uh, with two moving targets. So I can appreciate the challenge and the frustration, um, but it's, it's a good budget. I look forward to, we're walking through the rest of this as we see what actually comes out of the state. So thank you guys.
Mr. Hunter.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, hats off to the budgetary committee for a job well done as usual. And follow back on Dr. Parker, Happy International Women's Day.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. So I'll just say in closing, uh, our budget process is far from over. We're in the meat of our budget season, of course, and tonight was a very important step, a milestone that we, uh, needed to pass. Uh, we've started this process early on when we had our budget retreat, uh, just, uh, a few months ago. And we now, the board, uh, I think we all reflected, Dr. Parker, we're very appreciative of seeing the priorities that we laid out, being incorporated by your staff and what we were able to see tonight. What's coming next for us, uh, for the public to, to know is that next week, same time, we will be here to have the, uh, school board's public hearing on this budget. So now the public, you all have heard the budget presentation tonight. Next week, the public, you'll have a chance to come in and weigh on that. We, we appreciate having you come out and speak and, uh, make your voice heard on the budget. And then of course, March twenty-second is when the board will hold our vote on this budget and, uh, and, uh, hopefully pass our, our budget on March twenty-second. Then March thirty-first is when the school board will present our budget to city council. And hopefully there that will, um, pass through April thirteenth. Uh, we will have our, uh, presentation of our board, of our, of our budget to city council. And then hopefully, uh, of course, July first, this whole thing goes into, uh, final action. So I'll just say in terms of highlights, what I'm, you know, very, uh, excited and proud to see in our budget is getting to that twenty dollars an hour, uh, minimum pay for our drivers. That's been a long time coming, uh, that we've worked very hard to, to see that come to fruition. We got six and a half percent average raise for all of our staff. And as well, uh, we've got middle school sports coming. So we know that there's been quite a buzz in the community and I'm really, you know, excited and, and proud of, of that. That's a major accomplishment. I think it's going to pay off, uh, big dividends. It's an investment in our youth that's going to pay dividends for many years to come. Of course, what's going to come next, you know, so I turn the heat on for the middle school sports to get that started. It's going to be adding more middle school sports, right? We already heard about tennis and golf tonight. But as well adding in that summer conditioning because part of, part of that is we're going to have to look in future years how we are going to support these middle school students as they want to train and get conditioned for their, their, uh, their events during the summer. And hopefully they'll be attending summer school, right, at the same time. So they can, they can come to conditioning in the morning, right? And go to summer school all afternoon and, and, uh, then, um, you know, we've got some very productive students.
Busy kids are good.
Busy kids, exactly. And so, uh, very, very excited to be part of this, uh, board where every year that I've been on this board, we have passed a, a raise. And I like to always, you know, say, hey, this year will be no different. Uh, we started out, when we started off this journey, it wasn't always, that wasn't always the case, but very proud that every year we've been talking about a raise. And this year will be no different. We'll continue to talk about raises and we've seen that that is, is paying dividends now in terms of that compression. So, uh, hopefully after next year, we will be, uh, you know, almost done with the compression and everyone will have, will feel like they are very rewarded and respected in their position that every year, um, you're looking at those step increases as you are progressing with our division and you want to stay here. And lastly, I just want to say thank you to Riverside Elementary School for providing the board with these, um, wonderful gifts for school board appreciation month. So, um, we know that, uh, school boards are not necessarily appreciated that much. We even got some criticism for us even acknowledging that there was school board appreciation month at last school board's, uh, meeting. So I'll just, you will take these gifts and we'll quietly, uh, take them back to our, our vehicles. And we still want to thank Riverside Elementary School for providing them to us. And with that, uh, we stand adjourned.